Yeah.
A second.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to Ozark City Hall. We're glad you're here for the Board of Aldermen meeting and engaging with your elected officials. Listening to perspectives of city residents, business owners, and other community members helps our elected leaders make more informed decisions. Before the meeting begins, let's review our rules of order. These ensure the meeting is orderly and efficient while allowing everyone who would like to speak an opportunity to do so. There are two opportunities for you to speak: during the agenda's scheduled visitor and guest portion of the meeting, and during public discussion of new bills and resolutions. During the agenda's scheduled visitor and guest portion, anyone who signed up at the city clerk's office before 5:00 p.m. the Wednesday before the meeting can speak to Aldermen about the topic they specified. Now, in the public discussion of new bills and resolutions, that allows you to give comments for Aldermen to consider before they make a decision. The consent agenda bills are not open to comment. If you want to speak about an item on the consent agenda, you must sign up by noon the Friday before the meeting. You can do that by contacting the city clerk in writing, or fill out a card in the council chambers before the meeting starts. Write down the specific bill, and give the card to the city clerk before the consent agenda is set. That bill will then go to a first reading, which is open to public discussion, and anyone may speak about it. Anytime anyone is speaking, the following rules apply. First, only one person should speak at a time. Please be respectful of the person speaking, and hold your comments until it's your turn. Second, anyone speaking must do so from the podium and speak into the microphone. Third, you must first provide your name and address in writing to the city clerk before beginning your comments. These forms are provided near the entrance. You also must state your name and address to the Board of Aldermen using the podium microphone. Fourth, all comments should be addressed to the mayor and Aldermen. Finally, all speakers have five minutes to make their comments. The mayor or Alderman may have additional questions for speakers after their five-minute time limit. Occasionally, the board will invite someone to make a presentation at the meeting. This is only to give information to the board about a specific topic. These presenters will have no time limit on giving their information. This meeting will be livestreamed and recorded with video and audio unless there are technical difficulties. The use of cell phones or other devices is discouraged during the meeting. Please silence your phones right now. Again, thank you for being here and engaging with the city of Ozark. The meeting will begin shortly.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Aiken.
Here.
Alderman Campbell.
Here.
Alderman Galloway.
Here.
Alderman Hutchinson.
Here.
Alderman Medcalf.
Here.
Alderman Snyder.
Here.
We have six Aldermen present. We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have three sets of minutes tonight that we're going to be approving. But first, I'm going to be looking at the August 18, 2025 regular session. Are there any questions regarding these minutes? Not seeing any. Is there a motion that we approve them as printed?
I move that we approve the August 18, 2025 regular session minutes as printed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion is that we, all in favor, voting on the motion to approve the August 18, 25 regular session minutes made by Alderman Medcalf, second by Alderman Galloway, do so by a show of hands. And it passes. None opposed. Now, we're going to look at the August 21. This is the non-legislative session minutes. Any questions about these from Alderman? I'm not seeing any. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the August 21, 2025 non-legislative session as written.
Second.
Okay. The motion made by Alderman Medcalf, second by Alderman Galloway, that all in favor of a motion to approve the August 21, 2025 non-legislative session minutes, do so by a show of hands. That does carry. Our last set was September 2, 2025 regular session minutes. Any questions regarding these? Yes, sir.
I believe Chris and I were absent.
Okay. Yes. So, okay. And that is showing, that does show in the minutes. Yes. Okay. No other comments? There's a motion that we approved these as printed?
I make that motion.
Okay. Seconded by?
Second.
Okay. Okay. All in favor, the motion to approve the September 2, 2025 regular session minutes made by Alderman Hutchinson, the second Alderman Galloway, do so by a show of hands. Okay. And, okay, so we have four approving it and two abstaining. Okay, it does carry, though. Okay. There's no ceremony matters tonight. We do have four guests with us tonight. We'll first begin with the Ozark Historic River District update by Diane Richardson. Welcome to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for allowing me to be here this evening. It's been a few months since I've been here, and we are approaching our third quarter, and we do have some information that we are very pleased to share. I want to begin by saying that while a lot of organizations such as ours takes the summer off, we did not take the summer off. We had several people who did take a break this summer who worked very diligently through the year, and as volunteers, you know how stressful that can be and hard on them, and so we allowed them to take some time off to regroup and kind of refresh. In the meantime, we had a number of other volunteers who stepped up, starting with three that attended the Missouri State Conference with me in St. Charles this year. And so during that time, we focused on community engagement and economic growth. And I calculated up the hours and the number of, the amount of time that they spent on professional development, and so between the four of us, we put in over 80 hours in four days, learning everything we could at that particular time to bring back to our community. So that's how we began our summer in July. Moving forward, we spent some time looking at identifying key partnerships. We focused on increasing and improving our social media through our website and Facebook development. We created rack cards so that we could hand out something in print to those who were visiting our community and to hand those out. I had an opportunity to do that during Surtoma's Oktoberfest, and I went through about 80 cards, and I have none left. And I was able to visit with people visiting from Springfield, the surrounding area, and a lot of local people as well. So that was a very good outreach for myself personally and for the organization. We've also created some portable signage. We know we can't be everywhere, and our volunteers are spread pretty thin, but we can put a sign just about anywhere. And so we have created some sandwich boards that we could put at events that are taking place in our community, such as the craft fair that happened this weekend. We did a beginning kickoff series at Findlay Farms last week, and so we had our signage there as well. That includes a QR code, so no matter what, if you're not there in person, somebody can look us up and go directly to our website and check us out. And so we feel like, in our absence, that's a good resource for us to use. And we are getting ready to focus on the fourth quarter activities, which is very heavy for the HRD. We have a historic walking tour coming up. Any of you are familiar with that? It's probably one of our most recognizable events that we do within the district that will be on October the 18th. We've added a videography session to that, and so we are also partnering with the VFW to utilize their space during that event as well. We are also focusing on, believe it or not, Friday Night Lights, which is coming up in December. We've had several meetings already, and we are undergoing other planning activities for that event. And for me personally, this is the first time that I get to participate with the Christmas parade coming up in November. So I've been able to attend some of the planning meetings for that as well, and we are excited to have them utilizing a little bit more of the square this year during the parade. So we are excited about that. And kind of at the end of our summer activity list, we have postponed our board meeting, which would be tomorrow night typically, to October 21st. And that we are doing so that we can expand it a little bit and hold a more in-depth retreat for our volunteers that are there. So if any of you are regular attenders of that meeting, please mark your calendars, and I hope that you can join us at that time. Some projects I want to mention very briefly. We have had a private individual owning a business downtown that has partnered with a grant with Missouri Main Street to do some extensive tech pointing on their building. I'm awaiting numbers for that. I'm sure it's quite expensive to do that. We have a new business downtown that's done a major renovation. They've also created some jobs in the form of actual employees, and they've extended booth rental spaces to over 60 vendors in the area. The city has undergone some street improvements, and of course, that is private or public investment. So along with all of those things, we're looking at private, grants, public, all of those types of investments. And I don't want to forget about our volunteers. I had the pleasure of looking up some numbers today for 2024. We had over 3,000 volunteer hours, which the state of Missouri, through Missouri Main Street, values at over $31 an hour. That calculated out to a staggering $103,000 in volunteer time only. Very proud of our organization for doing that, and I think we will surpass that this year. I do want to give a really brief update on our kiosk, because I know I got to do that last time, and I was hoping by now we would have that done. There have been some challenges. There's always that one project that creates those challenges, and this one is it. We are now working with the president of the signage company to help us pull that together. They had some employee changes, some things dropped, and so that now we are back on schedule for that, hopefully by the end of this year, but no promises. So my time is up, but if there's any questions that anybody has, I'm happy to answer anything tonight and at any time.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey, give you a plug. Last Thursday night, I went to the, was it called storytelling?
Storytelling, folklore for the Ozark area, and we started off with the ballknocker story.
I know. That was very informative. Thank you for starting that series.
Yes, very good. Thank you. Glad you were there.
Okay. Next, we're going to recognize from St. Elme, Christian County. Christine Hasseltine for an update.
Good evening. Oh, sorry, putting that up there. Good evening, Mayor. Board of Aldermen. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Oftentimes, I am attending the meetings to advocate and support projects that we've been involved with. So I asked if I could come tonight to actually give an overview of some of the other activities that we've been involved with. And it's, I think sometimes we're so heavily focused on our projects that some of those other activities are kind of missed, and we don't talk about them as much. So I will share, I've been in this role for about three and a half years, and in that time, we've done quite a bit of restructuring of our organization. That has resulted in, we just recently reviewed our mission and our core values, and then also we have submitted our application to transition into an actual C3 organization. So structurally, we have changed quite a bit. That it takes a lot of work, but again, that's not something we talk about a whole lot. But I feel like that is very important for you guys to know that that is, it's strategic moves for future growth for all of Christian County, for us to do those. So the three pillars I really wanted to hone in on is, of course, business development. That's what most people think about whenever they think about economic development. It's the projects that we're involved with. But part of that that we, we don't really talk a lot about is our advocacy part of it. And so last year, we went to Jefferson City three different times, and previous year, I think we were up there five different times. But our goal in that is that there's so many regulations that, and proposals for legislation that is impacting our communities, and so we are working with all of our businesses and our communities to understand the, what is happening, and advocating and talking about that with our legislators, so they're aware how some of these items will impact Christian County. So, and Anna is obviously not with me today, Anna Evans. She takes the lead on that part of it for our organization, and she even has gone into different evening meetings and advocated and given different position and perspective. So she does a wonderful job, and I would like to recognize her for that. So the other, one of our other pillars was community enhancement, and one of the reasons we are transitioning to our C3 is to be able to do more with that. In the previous years, we've done, of course, part of, you know, this thing called the Chadwick Fire Overpass. We were part of that. But in addition to that, we, since the beginning of this year, we've applied for over $300,000 just in grants. So there's a lot more that, place making, that quality of life piece, that every community is a little different in what their focus is on economic development, and so that category helps us support even our smaller communities. And then our final bucket or pillar that we really hone in on is promoting Christian County. And Stevie Barfa in our office, she is our marketing director, and she manages two different platforms. One is our Show Me side of it, and the other one is our Explore Christian County. So this is tied to business investment and recruitment for the Show Me side of it, and then the Explore Christian County is to drive, help drive tourism and tourism dollars and assets into Christian County. And so one of our big wins we were really happy with was actually a donation of different billboards throughout all of the region, and so this was just their little sample that they gave us, and so I wanted to share that with you guys today so you can see it. But we are, this was started because of the partnership with the City of Ozark, City of Nixa, and City of, sorry, the Chambers of Nixa and Ozark as well. All came alongside us to fund the National Geographic UK that campaign. And so with that, this has really spurred off, and we've seen great traffic in supporting all of the events and the activities that, that everyone is doing in our, in our region. So, and the last two little updates, I got 30 seconds, is, one is our first Tuesday event that we have every month, and that is where we have discussions about economic development. So this one, we have the Director of Economic Research from the state coming down, and it's tomorrow morning, but they are going to hone in on, from the county, or sorry, from the state to the region to Christian County, and how we're all tied together and how we're impacting it. So you guys are always more than welcome to attend those meetings. Those seem to be really great conversations. So, can I, the one last thing is, I want to just say, I love working with the City of Ozark and their leadership and everybody here. They're a great partner in economic development and future growth.
We appreciate what you do. Thank you. Any questions? Yes.
Just one quick comment. I think our board members might want to know this. At the MML conference in St. Charles, there was a professor from Kirkwood who is a consultant. She performs tasks like Kristen's organization does for economic development, provides advice to communities and counties what to do. After she spoke, I went up to her, I said, I'm from Ozark, Christian County, you know, is there anything, you know, that you'd like to do to help us or suggest? And her response was, oh, no, that's where Kristen Hazeltine and Show Me Christian County is. You don't need me. She literally said that. That's how good you are. She said you guys were at the top of your game, you and your team.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Buddy Huggins. You have the platform, sir.
My name is Buddy Huggins. I'm a YouTuber. I make YouTube videos. I live at 1201 West Farmer Street. We were talking about the comprehensive annual report form, and there is a net position page that is very important, and it is still missing eight pages from the most recent one, which makes it incomplete. There is a state law that says it has to be up and acknowledged by June. I don't know if that's June 1st or June 30th, but it's out of compliance, and no one has reached out to me with the city to talk about it.
Okay, Buddy, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but Maria, we didn't, sorry. So you find it's starting now, because it wasn't started. So go ahead. Continue, sir.
Okay. Everything is checking out real good with it. Let me give you an update on what I do know. I do know that the year 2024 is 121,98,000. That's a big number. It's hard for me to read it. Okay, in 2023, it was 112 million. Year 2022, it was 104 million. In year 21, it was 93, almost 94 million. So the only other one, 20 is not, not registering with the computer systems. 19 is not registering. 18 is not registering. Now, these are years, 2018. 2017 is the one that got us all started on this. Can y'all hear me? Man, the acoustics in this place is really bad. I know a quick way to teach y'all how to fix it. You set up a speaker right there, and you set up a speaker right there. You tie it all in with Bluetooth. Okay, 2017, you had $65,700,000. 16, 2016, no data. 2015, no data. 2014, no data. 2013, no data. This system is, for the PDFs, is not registering with this system, and the system is my AI assistant. And so we're up to date on the current information, but if we could get eight missing pages from 2024, which is supposed to be a complete audit by now, we can move ahead with talking about where and how you made, I mean, look at the growth. Let's be positive. That's a lot of growth. That's 10% every year. And if these numbers stay like that in the future, it's just going to keep growing. So as a person that's in the community that knows this data, I know everybody else don't know it, and I don't understand why. It should be public knowledge. It's supposed to be printed in the paper, not once a year, but twice a year. That's a federal, that's a state law. But if we could all get together and talk about where that, that profit of that money is, it's in, it's in, you know, structures, buildings, concrete, sidewalks, whatever. But there is a lot of it that's being, something's done, it's getting the interest is accumulated, and the public needs to know that. Not that anything is missing. I thought something might be missing, but I've crunched the numbers the best I can, and it appears everything is really tight. In other words, except what is happening to the interest off of the actual assets that are liquid. And if we can get that information, then I can talk about building skateboard parks and stuff like that. Talk about, you know, oh, you mentioned your truck being taken away because, you know, you heard a rumor that they might do something away with trucks and big cars. Yeah, you ought to think about that. In 2030, it's Agenda 2030, they actually have a plan for us to stop riding vehicles. The bridge that he's building, y'all know important German, you know, the people that are involved in the trail. If you really look at that, that's going to be something that people will use in the future. Bike riders don't use those kind of things. We ride the county roads. But that money that was given to y'all has a hold on you. Same thing with the COVID money. It had a hold on you. Now, what if they come up and tell you that you want to, you know, this population right here, they want us to get vaccinated? You ain't got nothing legally that you can say to defend yourself, because every system that is put in front of us is tied to a system that we don't know about, like the public doesn't know about the comprehensive annual report form, like they should. If I'm saying what's true, by 2030 or 2035, we won't even be able to use the highway. We'll have to use the trail to get to, from Ozark to Springfield and be able to do our business that way. You remember China? Everybody was riding bicycles when we first seen it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Our last speaker tonight is Tammy Carpenter. Welcome to the mic.
How are y'all doing this evening? I'm here to ask the city to put in some sort of ordinances into place for our short-term rentals or Airbnbs, Verbos, you know, those type of places that we rent on a weekly, you know, bi-weekly, monthly type basis for six months or less. Most of those fall into a gap space, we'll call it a gray area, that doesn't get governed by the state because they don't have at least five sleeping rooms to them, so they don't get monitored like lodging laws. They won't get their life safety checks or health compliance checks and all. And unfortunately, in my neighborhood, they're beginning to take over. It's not necessarily a problem. We like them. We want the city to have, you know, visitors and people coming in, but when you can throw a paper airplane from your home and hit at least four or five of them in your neighborhood, it becomes a bit much. I don't know about you, but I like to know my neighbors. I like to know the people I live next to. We look out for one another. We take each other's trash in and mail in when, you know, we're on vacation. But unfortunately, when they're Airbnbs, we have a lot of strangers and comings and goings, and sometimes we get really nice families that are wonderful. Other times, we get construction crews starting their trucks, say, you know, at 5:00 in the morning, which are not so much fun. So I just would like to ask the city to put in some sort of ordinances that would allow or limit how many Airbnbs can be in any one neighborhood, how close they could be together. I know the city of Springfield has such ordinances on the books that they can't be within 500 feet of one another. Some of ours are, well, back to back, or three or four houses apart, which is not enough. They surround our bus stops, and unfortunately, I have small children that are still in grade school. They stand at the bus stop in the morning, and I don't know who's renting those homes, other than that their credit card cleared and, you know, they're renting them. I don't know if it's a pedophile or a mass murderer, for all I know. And they couldn't be, and they could be really nice families. We've had both. But at this point, I think the city would like to have some oversight to know where these homes are located, how many of them we have, and also, you know, make sure that they are safe for lodging and people, whether they have working smoke detectors, whether they have working fire extinguishers. whether they have working fire extinguishers. Do they have the proper insurance if they do catch fire? Because, well, we all know that if you're renting something, you probably don't have the vested interest that a homeowner would in making sure everything works properly or reporting that it worked properly and that it didn't do something crazy while you were renting it. I don't know what that looks like for the city. I know that's probably a discussion for you guys. But I would like to just see something on the books so that way we don't have so many overtaking our neighbors and going to short-term rentals. Because I know of the one that's three doors down from me. We've had cops and ambulances at it during one visit. I don't know why. That's not my business. But it's kind of concerning when you look out your window and you see cops and the ambulance is showing up. And it happens twice in a matter of two weeks to the same visitor. And then the next week, you get a construction crew at 5:00 AM. So I'm just asking that you guys take a look, and we get something on the ordinances that will help control those. And in the long term, collect fees for you guys because I'm sure licensing fees and business licenses should be required if you're running a business, which is what these are, in a residential zone because we are classified as residential. And that's all I have for you.
Okay.
And I gave you guys a list. This is, I can't speak to all neighborhoods. But that is just the map of my neighborhood and the ones around us and around our bus stops. And you can see how they're very congregated to one side. And unfortunately, very heavily around some of our bus stops, which concerns me with small children, you know, kindergartners and first graders and every other grade standing out there on the curb in the morning.
Alderman Galloway has a question for you.
Ms. Carpenter, would you feel comfortable leaving your email address with our communications person there?
Of course.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Anyone else? Okay. Ms. Carpenter? She's leaving an email right now. I just want her to know something, but she's writing down an email. No, 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 we appreciate you being here tonight, sharing this topic. And what I want to do is, the third Thursday lunch, we have working discussions where there's no voting or anything, but we talk about topics and all. And this is something in the future I want to put on our agenda to talk more about with a city administrator and all. So we do appreciate you sharing here tonight.
Hi, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Now, we're going to move to our consent agenda, which is our first, second reading and no discussion. Let me turn my notes. City clerk, has anyone signed up tonight to speak on any of the three bills on the consent agenda?
No mayor, no one has signed up.
Okay. Then are there any two aldermen here tonight wanting to remove any one of the three bills from the consent agenda tonight? I'm not seeing the movement. Okay. So therefore, our next agenda tonight is the consent agenda. I need a motion and a second to set the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I move that we set the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay. All in favor of the consent agenda, do so with a raised hand. Anyone opposed, so therefore that motion passes. Now, we need a motion and a second to read the consent agenda by title twice.
Your Honor, I move that we read by title twice the following bills. Bill number 3690, 3691, 3692.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion is to read bill number 3690 through 3692 on the consent agenda by title twice. Do so with a raised hand. And they're not opposed, so that motion passes.
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Darrell Moore Tech Construction, Inc. for construction services related to the 2025 Biagio street storm water improvements. An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Hunter Chase and Associates, Inc. for construction services for street and sidewalk improvements on East Robertson Street and South Second Avenue. An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Christian County Links for community programming and education. Then I'll read them a second time. An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Darrell Moore Tech Construction, Inc. for construction services related to the 2025 Biagio street storm water improvements. An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Hunter Chase and Associates, Inc. for construction services for street and sidewalk improvements on East Robertson Street and South Second Avenue. An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Christian County Links for community programming and education.
Thank you. Now, we need a motion and a second to approve bills number 3690, 3691, 3692 on the consent agenda to become ordinances 25-065 through 25-067.
Your Honor, I move that we enact bills number 3690, 3691, 3692, respectively, as ordinances 25-065, 25-066, and 25-067.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay. So the motion is to, and a second to approve bill number 3690, 3691, 3692, to become ordinances 25-065 through 25-067. That motion was made by Alderman Galloway. It was seconded by Alderman Snyder. Real call, please.
Alderman Aiken?
Aye.
Alderman Galloway?
Aye.
Alderman Snyder?
Aye.
Alderman Metcalf?
Aye.
Alderman Campbell?
Aye.
Alderman Hutchinson?
Aye.
We have six aye votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, we're going to be moving to second readings. And therefore, because this is a second reading, this bill is close to the public. But this is bill number 3689.
Your Honor, I move that we place bill number 3689 on second reading by title only.
Second.
Okay. The motion is to place bill number 3689 on second reading by title only. That motion was made by Alderman Aiken. It was seconded by Alderman Campbell. All in favor of the motion to discuss bill 3689, do so by show of hands. And that does carry it.
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Radmacher Brothers Escavating Co., Inc. for construction of Phase 1 of the Garrison Springs Trail.
Okay. This time, we would like to recognize Public Work Director Jeremy Parson for any comments, since it has been a month.
I know. It does feel like it's been a while. We've got the presentation tonight, if you have any questions. But I think last time had some good feedback, so I'm here to answer.
Any questions for director? I have not seen any. Okay. Since there's no board response.
Your Honor, I move that we adopt bill through 689 as ordinance number 25-068.
Okay. The motion is that we adopt bill number 3689 to become ordinance 25-068. That motion was made by Alderman Aiken. It was seconded by Alderman Campbell. Real call, please.
Alderman Campbell?
Aye.
Alderman Hutchinson?
Aye.
Alderman Galloway?
Aye.
Alderman Snyder?
Aye.
Alderman Aiken?
Aye.
Alderman Metcalf?
Aye.
We have six aye votes. Motion carries.
Okay. Now, we're going to be moving to a first reading. But this is a formal public hearing bill, bill number 3693.
Yeah, Your Honor, I move that we place bill number 3693 on its first reading by title and a brief description only.
Seconded by?
Second.
Okay. The motion is to place bill number 3693 on its first reading by title only. That motion was made by Alderman Metcalf. It was seconded by Alderman Snyder. All in favor of voting on the motion to discuss bill 3693, do so by show of hands. And that does carry it.
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, amending the zoning code and official map by changing the zoning classification of certain real property located at 1014 through 1018 South Third Street.
Okay, thank you. Now, the public hearing for bill number 3693 is now open. At this time, we have staff comments, please, from Director Randall Whitman.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. This is a, this is a request to rezone this property on Third Street from the Central Business District to General Commercial. As you can see from the photo, there's two buildings there. They are attached. In April, there was two parcels, and they were combined. So that was, that was finished several months, several, several months ago. The zoning, the surrounding properties and the use to the north and south of the, this property are both zones C4, Central Business District. They're both contractor offices. I think one of them is a roofing contractor, the other one a heating, ventilation, and air conditioning office. The property to the east is residential, single-family. Across the street, on the west side of Third Street, it's single-family kind of to the northwest. And as you can see, it's C2, General Commercial, where a general rental has, it's mainly bacon up against the street, but it's otherwise commercial. So we look at a little bit of the backstory, the comprehensive plan, both the comprehensive plan and the onward Ozark Plan both support, both support commercial retail, general businesses. This, this business fits in that category. There really is, there's no change to what would happen there if this zoning were approved. The Third Street District Plan, which is a component of the onward Ozark Plan, doesn't specify one zoning district over the other, over another, just generally supports commercial uses. This zoning change wouldn't impact water, sewer, or any other infrastructure. Wouldn't impact stormwater improvements. Wouldn't require any buffer yard improvements. No changes to parking, anything like that, unless the property's redeveloped. Staff really didn't identify any significance, concerns with respect to zoning or land use friction with this zoning change. With that, it's a pretty brief overview. Everything, we did not hear, have any opposition to this zoning change at the August 25th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission did support to recommend approval of this. Staff supports it. And we would like to request this, this bill be expedited tonight and have the second reading as well. That's all I have. An answer. Any questions you have?
Any questions for? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Thank you, sir. Okay. At this time, is anyone here who would speak for bill 3693? This is your time to speak.
Jeannie McFall, 1324 East Warren Avenue. I don't have any problem with him going from C4 to C2, but I don't understand why it's necessary for him to have to pay to rezone and also resurvey this property. There's numerous properties along Third Street and South Street with metal roofs that have C4 zoning. And I think, based on the previous information that was given at the meetings, that was why everybody said he had to go to C2. So I think somebody needs to look at the zoning along that corridor for that purpose because there isn't any regulation on roofing for residential property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any others from the audience who would speak for bill number 3693? This is your time. Okay. Anyone here who would speak against bill number 3693? I'm not seeing movement. Therefore, the public hearing for bill number 3693 is now closed. As stated by our director, we wish for this bill to be expedited tonight.
Yes, Your Honor, I move that we do place bill number 3693 on its second reading by title and brief description only.
Is there a second to this?
Second.
Okay. Motion is to place bill number 3693 on second read by title only. That motion was made by Alderman Metcalf. It was seconded by Alderman Snyder. All in favor of this motion to discuss bill 3693, do so by show of hands. Anyone oppose? Okay, as noted, okay.
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, amending the zoning code and official map by changing the zoning classification of certain real property located at 1014 through 1018 South Third Street.
Any additional comments from our director, Randall? Any questions for our director? Yes, Alderman Galloway.
I had a question for the city attorney. Was this property a subject of a closed meeting a while back? And to what extent am I free to refer to that meeting?
May I have a moment to confer with the city administrator about that question?
Sure.
Yes.
Can we take a short recess?
Okay, we're taking a, is it five minutes or three minutes? How much time do you need?
Five minutes.
Okay. We're taking a five-minute session. Right. Okay, okay. So we're back in session, and I think our attorney has a response for us.
Thank you. From my understanding, it's a two-part question. Was there a closed session? The answer to that is yes. The second part of the question about you individually being able to discuss any content therein, no, you alone would not be able to waive that privilege, because that was a closed session due to legal advice. In order to waive the content, it would need to be a unanimous vote to unseal.
Thank you.
Now, clarification, unanimous vote or a majority vote?
Majority.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, just my clarification. Okay. Any further comment? Okay. Any other questions regarding this ordinance? Okay. Oh, what?
I guess what I will say is, is that I am mindful of what happened and what votes were made there. I think a decision was made there, and I feel bound to honor that decision, so I guess I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we adopt Bill number 3693 as ordinance number 25-069.
Is there a second to this?
Second.
Okay. Okay. The motion is to adopt Bill number 3693 to become ordinance 25-069. That motion was made by Alderman Metcalf, it was saying Alderman Aiken. Roll call, please.
Alderman Hutchinson?
Nay.
Alderman Metcalf?
Aye.
Alderman Galloway?
Aye.
Alderman Aiken?
Aye.
Alderman Snyder?
Aye.
Alderman Campbell?
Nay.
We have four aye votes, two nay votes, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. There's no new bills tonight. We do have a resolution 2031 that we wish to now look at.
Your Honor, I move that we read by title, Resolution 2031.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion is rebuttal title, Resolution 2031. All in favor of the motion to discuss Resolution 2031, do so by show of hands, and that does carry.
A resolution, a resolution by the Board of Aldermen of the city of Ozark, Missouri, directing staff to take all necessary steps to design, plan, and construct a new public safety facility, including incorporating components of this plan in the 2026 proposed budget.
Okay. At this time, I see the administrator is going to have comments for us.
Yes, Your Honor, this resolution before you tonight puts into motion the discussion and action items that occurred at the last work session, which was August 21, in which I made a presentation to the board regarding a proposal for a public safety facility. This resolution and the action items that would result from it, if passed, are consistent with the presentation that was made. I am happy to answer any questions that the board would have as you get into discussion of this, but it is consistent with the presentation that was made and conversations that I've had with board members since that presentation.
Okay. Any comments from the board? Yes, ma'am.
It's obvious that we need a new police facility, and we're very fortunate to have the leadership we have in the police department and the officers that work there. We have a great force there, and they do deserve a new facility. However, I'm unsure about this resolution. It redirects approximately $17 to $20 million for 30 years of the capital improvement sales tax money from ongoing projects across the city's budget towards building a municipal police complex. This money's now being spent on the productivity of all the city departments. There's an old saying, we are taking from Peter to pay Paul. Some of what may be unfunded, I'm going to enumerate five things, and there may be more than that. First of all, grant matches. These are, here are a list of grants that we've received just since January of 2025, and we may lose these and others due to a lack of matching money. Community development block grants for infrastructure, surface transportation block grants, Ozark Transportation Organization grants, Missouri Department of Transportation grants, Transportation Alternatives Program grants, Missouri Department of Conservation, Missouri Highway and Transportation Department, Missouri Department, Public Safety Blue Shield Grant, Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Highway Safety Program for traffic enforcement grant. Number two, equipments and training. Block safety cameras and technology, body worn cameras and related software, professional training and development for all departments. Number three, no funds to implement the plans that we've had made, paid to have drawn, and spend a lot of time, staff time, and money doing. And those are the ADA Facility Assessment and the Parks and Recreation Plan, and some of the things that will probably go unfunded are putting ball fields out on our unused property that we already own and developing Garrison Springs. Number four, contracts for services. It's a force magnifier, as the chief says. Show me Christian County could be even more productive with increased funding for their many projects. The Historic River District, as Mrs. Richardson commented in 2024, the state valued the HRD's economic contribution to the community at over $103,000 just in their coordinated volunteer work. It's hard for organizations like these and the Chamber of Commerce and their business development work, hard for them to continue without a match from the city in that contract for services that allows them to have some professional guidance. And number five, scheduled services. The scheduled street repair and maintenance, the scheduled for sidewalks. I think if the money was lost, the schedules would probably, what's scheduled for maybe five years from now would be eight years from now, and during that time, deterioration occurs and is much more expensive, the more deteriorated the streets and roads are. And just this week, about the sidewalks, I was on my front porch, and there was an eight- or nine-year-old girl, and she was in a new wheelchair, and she was coming down the sidewalk, and when she got to the sidewalk in front of my house, and I'm not saying mine is worse than anybody else's, it's not, but it's buckled, and she was afraid to go on it, and she rolled out into the street to go around it because she could not get down on the sidewalk. I think there's some danger in both of these. So what does this mean in real life? Number one, it means that we will once again be in a reactive mode to infrastructure issues. Number two, it means that great projects like the Avenue of Heroes will be left undone. Number three, it means that we will lose economic development opportunities. Studies show that connected walkability trails contribute to the health of the citizens and economic development of the community by means like cultural heritage tourism, that's the Avenue of Heroes that we'd lose, recreational tourism, floating, hiking, walking on connected trails, ecotourism, our river and Garrison Springs development. Then, connected bicycle trail users spend an average of $47 per person in the community therein. Studies have shown that. New businesses typically follow that market, that traffic. Studies have shown that property values for homes and businesses near the trail can increase between 4% and 20%. Every dollar spent building multi-use trails returns a multiple of that annually. Downtown Greenway in Greensboro, North Carolina demonstrated that they had a $30 return annually for each dollar of the construction price of their project, and the KD Trail is also a good example of that in Missouri. Trails give commuting options for high-quality jobs, and example right here is the Chadwick Flyer Business Park. It's really near the new bicycle overpass connecting the many subdivisions on the west side of the highway with the east side of the highway. Number four, we are not giving the taxpayers what they want, as noted in the 2024 Onward Ozark study. Seventy-six of respondents stated that greenways and trails significantly or moderately added to the quality of life in Ozark. Sixty-two percent stated that parks and trails were either very effective or effective at meeting their needs as residents of Ozark. All of what I've said to this point is compounded by the following facts. City revenue and expense hits. This isn't conjecture or maybe. There are others that are conjecture or maybes. This is not. The increased minimum wages will have an impact on our city expenditures. I think in Parks Department, it's between quarter of a million and a half a million dollar impact, pretty large. Increased electric rates, they're asking for 29% to 39% increase, but they may not get that, but whatever they get, they're going to get an increase, and that impacts not only the city and the buildings we have to operate, but it also impacts the consumers and their expendable incomes, and they are not going to have the money to spend, which will decrease our sales tax. Frozen property taxes, there will be no increase there because of the bill that went through the legislature, no increases at all. And within the city expenses, retirement expenses will increase. Last year, the increased healthcare cost was 22%, and this year, we think we'll probably have a flat sales tax next year, given these items, very likely could be a decrease in sales tax and a decreased interest rate for the reserve funds due to the interest rate cuts that are starting to come down from the fence. But the good news is, we have an option. Why not allow the taxpayers to understand that they have a choice before they were told if they didn't pass it, well, we wouldn't build a police station? This time, we have a choice for them, that even if they don't pass it, we will build a police station, but they will lose all of the things that I listed. That will be their choice, though. Allow them next April to make that decision. In January, we were ready, January of 2025, we were ready to do that, but momentary circumstances changed, and it was a tabled. It was a resolution that was tabled, and we did not revisit it before making this decision. Give them their information. They can choose between an additional source or voluntarily give up all the things mentioned. I know that the past three attempts failed by a large majority, but the decision was presented as we just won't build it. Voters didn't lose anything, already said that, but now it's a different choice. We're in a different situation totally. And as Bruce said, before, the city didn't have a communications staff of professionals to help provide information for the public so they could make an informed choice. And in conclusion, four things. We will not have the resources to do many of the things we're doing now, just to summarize. Think about what this means in real life to our citizens. Number three, the city revenues are going to decrease, and the city expenses are going to increase this year, I think. And number four, there is an option. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any others from the board? Alderman Galloway?
Just briefly, so that the public could understand my vote, I support, I support the resolution. The resolution is about funding a police station. In 2003, the police station, such as it is, was too small. In 2013, too small. 2023, too small. 2025, still too small. It's about 5,500 or so square feet, serving a growing police force of about 55 or so The administration, our city administrator, who is very experienced and has worked in a growing community that has tensions within the budget, has recommended that we use the capital improvement funds to build the police station. The issue before this board is whether that is an appropriate decision. If you look at my biography on the city website for Alderman, you will see the last sentence, I put out the three different values that I stand for. First value is to keep law enforcement strong, first value. Anybody who voted for me knew that's where I stood. They put me in office, it would be no surprise that I would be supporting law enforcement on this issue, and that was what we were elected to do, to make decisions here at this díos when the issues are presented to us. The issue is before us, it's recommended by an experienced city administrator who is saying we need this. Of course, the police chief is adamant that we need this, and you can't argue that it isn't needed, it's been needed for over two decades. The only question for me is, is it appropriate? The citizens voted for a capital improvement fund years ago. That was in the context of buildings and infrastructure like roads. As an Alderman, I've served with Alderman Campbell through the years and for Jeanne Hutchinson for a lesser time, but we've all had to wrestle with a contention between first One principle is we need roads for people to travel safely on. When I first got elected, Jeremy Parsons, one of the first things he did as Public Works Director when he made that position, was he hired a company that took corrings of our roads, and the roads were in a state of absolute disrepair, well beyond, they were about to collapse, many of them. We had to divert or continue to divert capital improvement funds, put into, really intended not just for roads, but we had to devote them entirely to roads. Even when the transportation sales tax got passed by the public, we still had to divert them into roads. We were in an emergent situation. We were in an emergent situation for years, and we have had to invest and invest and invest in first principle, which is we've got to have functioning roads. That came at a price, and that came at a price in that another first principle was at stake, and that's law enforcement. We don't have a community, we don't have economic progress, we do not have safe streets if we do not have the authority of law enforcement. We do not have safe streets if we do not have the authority of law enforcement in our community present. And they need the support, the basic support, just like my business, my law practice needs the support, or my wife's business needs the support of an adequate building to keep it functioning. And so I go back to, is what the administration proposing appropriate? We've had to divert for too long and immerse our funds from capital improvement purely to roads, and then we've had, we've used it for other things. I think that's true. But the time is upon us, and the time is now, because it is recommended to us, that we cannot delay it anymore. And I will not back down from what I told voters when I got elected and what I put out there every time, first principle, strong law enforcement. And I'm not going to shut this off to the voters two years from now or one year from now. They elected me to make the decision today, tonight, with the tools that I have at hand, with the recommendation of somebody extremely experienced and someone whose judgment I trust. And for that reason, I am supporting this bill or this resolution.
You wouldn't speak again? Your mic's, your light's on. Okay, yes, Alderman Snyder?
Well, you folks know how I feel about this. These police officers need a place that they can work and make this community safe. A four-by-four desk is not adequate for what they need to do. I've heard folks talk about trails and roadways and buildings. If we don't have the assets to protect those assets, building it is worthless. That's my opinion. I heard someone, you know, in previous leadership that sat up here at this table, tell me the law enforcement was not essential. That was nonsense. Law enforcement is very essential, just like fire service, just like ambulance service, just like our businesses that support this city and the people that support those businesses. We have to be able to protect them. We have Ozark Marketplace, we have Downtown, we have the Chadwick Flyer Trail. Those are all assets. We have to be able to protect and defend those assets from the, you know, from the criminal element. I have also heard up here that, you know, taking from Peter to give to Paul. Well, you know what? It's time for Paul to get restitution from Peter, and it's time to make this happen. I think our city manager, Mr. Johnson, has a very valiant plan for this. I put my faith in his hands on this, and I would definitely ask him to rely on the guidance of our police chief with the construction of this facility if this passes. That's just the way I see it. You've heard me time and time again say it's time to pick the can up. We're picking it up tonight. That's where I stand.
Thank you. Is Alderman Akin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, first of all, I think this is, really, it's a tough call. It's been an extremely tough call for me, and candidly, I've gone kind of right down to the wire on it. And so, you know, for those of you who haven't heard my latest thoughts, I hope you don't feel like I'm speaking out of both sides of my mouth. But I think everybody agrees, there is, the need is paramount. The facility is inadequate. It's, I think everybody agrees with that proposition, and it's not a question of whether to build a new police station, it's not a question of why we need to build a new police station, it's more of a, more comes down to more of a how and a when question. I've had the opportunity to tour the police station. I work as a prosecutor with Ozark officers several times a week regularly. I've spoken to many of them about the state of the existing facility. I've heard their feedback, I've heard their grievances, for lack of a better word. And so I, you get no opposition from me as to whether we need a new, new police station. I ultimately, I guess, just to kind of try to render my thoughts as concise as possible, which is a hard thing for me to do, I look at whether there's anything, first off, resent, first off, whether there's anything resembling a public mandate for this, what amounts to a, a really significant reallocation of our limited resources. And I go back to 2017 with the first passage of the transportation sales tax, where the voters passed that by a large margin, signaling to us that the existing funding for transportation, which of course included the CID sales tax, was not adequate at that time. And then in 2022, they renewed that signal and said, it's still not adequate, we want more of the transportation sales tax. And then in 2024, I think you can draw probably multiple conclusions from the community survey, but one of the big ones was that we want more infrastructure, you know, a question was asked, if a use tax was passed, what would you like to see it go toward? And, and the highest percentage item was infrastructure, roads. And, and I don't want to gloss over, I don't want to gloss over trails either, because I don't see those as luxury projects. I think they're essential to our long-term economic viability. If you look at big trends this century, you see workplace mobility, you see work becoming more remote, you see people not confined to a place, they're choosing to go places where it's livable, where it's walkable, where it's, where there's a perceived quality of life. And those trends are only going to accelerate, would be my, would be my modest hypothesis if you look at the emerging technology. So I see those as, the trails as well as the roads as, as essential. And so in the absence of a political mandate, I don't think that means we don't go forward. The voters, I think, as Mr. Galloway sort of alluded to, they, they voted us in to use our discretion, and we may not get a clear public mandate for something like this. But it does make me, the absence of the mandate does make me more risk averse. And so we look at the pots of funding that go into our transportation budget, and we're talking really about putting two of those at stake in the next 18 months. We're reallocating the CID, and then we are trusting the transportation sales tax to the whim and will of the voters every five years. And, and then the gas tax would be, I guess, the third major bucket, which is the relatively safe one. So, and, and the absence of a mandate, I guess, so to speak, I, I don't think I'm comfortable staking both of those sources of funding. I would prefer to keep this on the agenda, to maintain this as a high priority item, but I would be more comfortable attempting, you know, with the professional public outreach staff that we have now, another run at an alternate, a new source of funding, i.e. the use tax. I think the county has provided an excellent template for how that use tax might be formulated on a future ballot. I would encourage anybody who hasn't seen it to review the language on the upcoming November 4 ballot. I think it is much more artfully done than the prior use tax proposals by the city have been done in the past. Of course, we'll see how it goes. But I, I, at the end of the day, I'm, I'm in favor of seeing this done in the near future. I'm not in favor of this resolution right now.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay. Now, we do need to ask if anyone from the floor wants to speak tonight regarding Resolution 2031. This is your time if you wish to say something. Okay. I'm not seeing movement, so any final board response? I'm not seeing any, so.
Your Honor, I move that we adopt Resolution 2031.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion is that we adopt Resolution 2301. That was made by Alderman Galloway. It was sent by Alderman Snyder. Roll call, please.
Alderman Snyder?
Aye.
Alderman Campbell?
Aye.
Alderman Akin?
Nay.
Alderman Metcalf?
Aye.
Alderman Hutchinson?
Nay.
Alderman Galloway?
Aye.
We have four aye votes, two nay, motion carries.
Okay. Thank you all very much. At this time, it's time to go to reports of officers, and C-Monstrator, Eric Johnson, what do you have for us?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to begin by congratulating the Utopia Club on another successful craft fair. They had exceptional weather, which of course, this board dialed up for them, and you can take all the credit for that, but there were hundreds, if not thousands, of people who were in the Ozark community over the weekend, and this, I believe, was their 51st year of hosting this particular craft fair. So congratulations to them. Your staff, we are diligently working on preparing your 2026 budget, so I'm currently getting ready to meet with all of the department directors, and we'll be hammering out the details of the 2026 budget, which I hope to present to you in November, and use the November non-legislative work session to discuss that budget proposal in great detail. Also want to remind everyone that there will be some educate, there will be two educational and informational sessions, charter commission work sessions that will be on October 14th and the 21st, from 5:30 to 6:30. We're hosting those on Tuesday evenings, one week apart. We, those are open to the public, and we hope that those will provide us with a really good opportunity to brief the, the public about this process, about what it entails, and hopefully get some commissioners to come out of that process, and we'll go forward with that. And just a reminder that October 16th, we will have a work session, that'll be Thursday, October 16th, from 11:30 a.m. until 1:30 p.m. And those are all the reports I have. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay. Any final comment for the board tonight? I am not seeing any, so is there a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn, please.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, no, it's fine. Okay, we have a motion for adjournment, this is my, Alderman Snyder, and I want to go with, say, Alderman Campbell. And all in favor of voting in the motion for adjournment, just by show of hands, and that does carry, and we are adjourned.